Good evening. I'd like to call this meeting to order. We do have a quorum. Welcome back, everybody. I would also remind everybody, please mute your cell phones so that they don't go off during our meeting. Everybody could do that. I'd ask you to stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance and please remain standing for the invocation.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Councilor Brimhall?
Our dear heavenly Father, we're grateful for this opportunity we have to join tonight as a community and grateful for the opportunities to be together. We ask thee to bless this evening that we may be able to discuss matters of the town, that we may have the spirit of love among us, that we may discuss things that are beneficial for the community in a positive way. We ask thee to bless our nation, our youth across the country, and especially the youth in our in our neighborhood and in our towns. We're grateful for all many blessings. We're grateful for the moisture we received this winter and we bless that our our monsoon season will come strong and that we may be, we may keep the fires at bay. We're grateful for all the sacrifice of the town, just for our for our town and we're grateful for the citizens that sacrifice as well. And we say these things in the name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
Item B on our agenda tonight is called to the public. This is a business meeting of the town council. The town values and welcomes public input. Please address the council as a whole and not individual council members. Do not address staff or members of the audience. Council action on items brought up during call to the public is limited by the open meeting law. Council may direct staff to study the matter and reschedule for further consideration at a later date. Items on the agenda will not be heard during call to the public and individuals are limited to three minutes. If anybody wishes to speak now or at the following meeting, you do need to fill out a card. So tonight, we have a request from Larry McCormick to address us. Larry? Your turn, Larry.
I wasn't sitting close enough to hear evidently. I wanted to read a handout that I've given a few and I gave Christie a number of them into the record this evening to the mayor and council. Good evening. Last week, the council voted not to hold a special election regarding the citizen referendum of its major amendment to the town's general plan, future land use map. The Citizens for Quality Development Political Action Committee and the People's Voice Committee are pleased the town will instead focus on updating and revising the general plan as required by state statute, conducting a comprehensive evaluation of issues and engaging its citizens in determining how the town will grow into the future. The People's Voice Committee stands committed to engaging with the town in the general plan revision process in a positive and proactive manner. PVC is making plans to undertake efforts to increase citizen awareness of the importance of the process. We are already planning to hold one or more forums this summer on how citizens can get involved in the general plan update process to help guide the future growth of Pine Top Lakeside. We are already seeking assistance from the Arizona Planning Association in conducting a citizens' general plan update involvement forum. We will keep the town and its citizens posted as we pursue and finalize our public involvement outreach plans. Our intent is to help foster informed citizenry that can provide meaningful input to the town regarding how it wants to see the town grow and address so many issues and challenges it faces. Thank you.
Thank you, Larry. We'll move on then to item C, which is our consent agenda. All items listed are considered routine matters and will be enacted by one motion to the council. There will be no separate discussion unless the member of the town council requests that an item be removed for discussion. Council members may ask questions without removal of the items from the consent agenda and items removed are considered their normal sequence as listed. As you can see, we have two items on our consent agenda tonight. Any questions from the council? Vice Mayor?
I move to approve the consent agenda. Second?
Thank you. It's been moved in second and all in favor, please signify by raising your right hand. Thank you. That carries unanimously. Item D is business before the council. Public comment will be taken at the beginning of each agenda item after the subject has been announced by the mayor and explained by staff. Any citizen who wishes may speak one time for five minutes on each agenda item before or after council discussion. Questions from council members, however, may be directed to staff or a member of the public through the mayor at any time. Item D1 is the Town of Pine Top Lakeside Proclamation, Arizona Fair Housing Month. Vice Mayor, please.
Arizona Fair Housing Month, April 2023, whereas the National Fair Housing Law of 1986, commonly known as the Federal Fair Housing Act and the Fair Housing Act, I'm sorry, and the Fair Housing Amendments Act of 1988 prohibits discrimination in the sale, rental, leasing, and financing of housing or land to be used for the construction of housing or in the provision of brokerage services on the basis of race, color, religion, sex, disability, familial status, or national origin. And whereas the 1968 and 1988 Federal Fair Housing Acts declare that it is a national policy to ensure equal opportunities in housing, and whereas fair housing laws guarantee the right to a housing market free from discrimination based on national origin, race, color, religion, sex, disability, and familial status, and whereas the state of Arizona recognizes and values the efforts of those who seek to reduce barriers to full and fair housing opportunities, and whereas Arizona salutes the organizations with a statewide focus on promoting fair housing opportunities for all Arizonans and who consider fair and affordable housing an important element for our society. Now therefore, I, Sterling Bues, for Stephanie Irwin, Mayor of the Town of Pine Top Lakeside, do hereby proclaim April 2023 as Fair Housing Month in the Town of Pine Top Lakeside and do hereby urge all citizens of this community to comply with the letter and spirit of the Fair Housing Law. In witness whereof, by Stephanie Irwin, set her hand and cause to be affixed the seal of the Pine Top Lakeside, Arizona, done at the Town Hall of Pine Top Lakeside this sixth day of April 2023.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. We'll move on then to item D2, which is a Town of Pine Top Lakeside Proclamation for National Public Safety Telecommunicators Week. Counselor Heisler, please.
National Public Safety Telecommunicators Week, whereas emergencies can occur at any time that require police, fire, or emergency medical services. And whereas, when an emergency occurs, the prompt response of police officers, firefighters, and paramedics is critical to the protection of life and preservation of property. And whereas, the safety of our police officers and firefighters is dependent upon the quality and accuracy of information obtained from citizens who telephone the Emergency Communications Center. And whereas, public safety telecommunications are the first and most critical contact our citizens have with emergency services. And whereas, public safety telecommunications are the single vital link for our police officers and firefighters by monitoring their activities by radio, providing them information, and ensuring their safety. And whereas, public safety telecommunications have contributed substantially to the apprehension of criminals, suppression of fires, and treatment of patients. And whereas, each dispatcher has exhibited compassion, understanding, and professionalism during the performance of their job in the past year. Now therefore, I, Stephanie Irwin, Mayor of the Town of Pine Top Lakeside, do hereby proclaim April 9th through 15th, 2023, as National Public Safety Telecommunicators Week in the Town of Pine Top Lakeside, Arizona. In witness whereof, I have herein too set my hand and cause to be affixed the seal of the Town of Pine Top Lakeside, Arizona, done at Town Hall of Pine Top Lakeside, Arizona, this sixth day of April 2023.
Thank you, Counselor Heisler. We'll move on to item D3, which is Consider Resolution Number 23-1667, authorizing the purchase of short-term rental monitoring software from GOVOS Inc., Jeremiah.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of the council. This item is a follow-up to the last item when you guys approved the ordinance enacting a short-term rental license. This is a request for software to help us monitor the short-term rentals in the community. And this is a professional service and it, the bids, we have two bids submitted. We don't necessarily have to bring this to you guys, but we wanted to, just to put it in the eyes of the community that we are being proactive and we're moving forward with this and also to get the word out that this process will take like 12 weeks after we get the contract to get the license available for short-term rentals. And then the community will also have two months to become compliant with the ordinance after the license is made available per the ordinance. So the request tonight is to approve the contract. It was for 29,000. Initially, they came in at a little over 32,000, I believe, and then they reduced the price and added the service of a complaint hotline. So we got a $7,000 value basically there because the complaint hotline was 5,000 and then they reduced it by 3,000, so technically 8,000. They changed the price because they're trying to get into the market here in Arizona.
Thank you. Thank you. Questions, comments for Jeremiah? So this is an annual license, an annual fee that we'll have to pay?
That is correct. It's a $250 annual licensing fee for short-term rentals.
No, no, I meant the software.
For the software, sorry. The software, yeah, this is an annual agreement and there is a it will have to be renewed annually. We can, of course, negotiate the contract. There is written into it a 7% increase annually.
So what kind of staff time is it going to take to implement this?
Well, we're hoping that they'll take on the biggest part of it, but we will have some time that we have to fix our website and get it linked to where it needs to go for the permitting. I can't put an exact hour to that, but I think it's going to be worth it whatever it takes. But yeah, we're going to have to put in some time to make it happen. That's why we need until July, not just on their end, but on our end also to get everything ready.
So you think this will be live July? That's the hope?
That's the hope, yeah. That, I think they said they, initially I thought it was four weeks, but they said it would take 12 weeks to get everything running and so we're aiming for July.
And if they get it done sooner, we can?
If they get it done sooner, it'll be on our website and then everyone who has a short-term rental license will get notified. We've had a lot of positive feedback from, from the ordinance that council enacted and a lot of people just wanting to be compliant and wondering when it's going to come online. But if they're on the other side of the fence or they don't know about it, GOVOS will actually notify them and then they'll get a number that they'll be able to put in to obtain their license specifically because it does a data scrape and identifies all the listings online from like 30 different sites.
Thank you. Any questions or comments for Jeremiah? Counselor Brimhall?
7% yearly markup?
Right.
Is that like a, is that, is that normal for the software industry?
Well, I had the conversation with him because I ran the numbers and say we stuck with them for 20 years and we're over 100,000. So it looks nice now, but I think that when it comes back, we'll renegotiate, we'll negotiate that.
7% markup?
But that's what's written into the contract currently if we go for auto renewal, yeah.
Oh, okay. Good. Thank you.
Yeah, thanks, Mayor Irwin. I just wanted to add to Jeremiah's, even if that program is updated before the 12 weeks, it's going to go on the consolidated fee schedule, which has to be posted on the town website for a certain amount of time. And if I post that consolidated fee schedule on my schedule next week, it's not going to be effective till at least July 15th, I believe, is what I figured out.
Okay. Thank you for reminding us of that, Christie. Yeah. Any other questions or comments on this? I personally think it's a great step forward. Counselor Smith?
Yes, I move to approve Resolution Number 23-1667, authorizing the purchase of short-term rental monitoring software from GOVOS Inc. in an amount not to exceed $29,000 and authorize the town manager to execute all documents necessary to complete this transaction.
I'll second that.
Thank you. We have a motion to second. Is there further discussion? All in favor, please signify by raising your right hand. Thank you. That carries unanimously. Thank you for researching this, Jeremiah. I think this will be a great tool for us. Okay, item D4 tonight is reports from council committee liaisons and the town manager. I'll start with Counselor Snitzer.
Thank you, Mayor. Let's see, I've got a few reports. For the White Mountain Nature Center, the bird shows are, they have resumed. So at 3 o'clock every afternoon, every day of the week, all seven days, there's a free bird show at the back of the nature center in the rehab facility. It's a lot of fun, so I encourage everybody to go there. We are just now starting construction, finally after our winter hiatus on the bird pens. So hope to have those done in the next few months. We almost have all of our leases in place. We decided we wanted to have leases with the people that are renting space from us. We're starting our summer, summer programs. In fact, in one sense, they've already started. We have a program. We call it the Saturday Hikes. Every Saturday, all summer long, there's a hike at the nature center with somebody that can lead the hike and actually give you a little bit of information. So it's again, free and really worthwhile. In the, within the nature center, we've almost completed remodeling of our front restroom into a wheelchair handicapped accessible restroom. And as soon as that's done, then we're going to remodel the back bathroom to do the same thing. And then we are looking at, in conjunction with Arizona Science Center, having a summer science camp, kind of like a summer camp we've had in past years and then stopped because of COVID. However, we do not have a teacher for that. And so if any of you have science teaching backgrounds, there is some pay for this. It's not, it's certainly not what anybody's worth, but there's a little bit of money to help offset the inconvenience and it would be something really good for our community. And then, so that's nature center. In tracks, our trail work resumes next Monday. We'll be working on the west side of town because some of our trails are still under snow or wet. We had a tool sharpening party and have all the tools all sharpened out, ready to go. We're still on track to install the first 10 bicycle gates. These are like a ramp that a bicycle can go right through the fence line. You don't have to stop and open a gate. That's going to be happening in April or May. And then we'll also be working later on this year on a new trail loop on the Blue Ridge Trail. And then the last thing is the Rainbow Lake Coalition. They're trying to work to help the irrigation district repair a collapsed pipe under the Creekside Development. When they built the development, they collapsed a pipe that takes water downstream and there's a pending lawsuit, but meanwhile, that really needs to be fixed. They tried to repair the gate in Rainbow Lake this year. They drained the lake down as low as it's ever been. I saw an island emerge in the middle of the lake that I'd never seen before and, and I was walking down on the, what used to be the lake bottom and I found the front door to an old wood burning stove. You know, it's been down underwater for 100 years. So it's probably going to go on my wall. But anyway, they, they were not able to repair the gate, so they're going to be draining the lake down again this year and try and get the day, get the lake repaired. And the lake, like I said, this summer, it was as low as I've ever seen it. Now it's totally full and a few days ago, it was about as high as I've ever seen it. So even though they drained it, it managed to fill in, you know, a few months in the fall. So good news, we have water in the lake. Who knows how long it'll stay? That depends on irrigation. That's my report. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Smith?
Yes, the Transportation Advisory Council will meet later this month, so I don't have anything to report on that. But we're working on a transportation study to check out the, the area and any improvements we need to make in the bus system that we, that we have, the transportation system. So I'll probably next month be able to report on that. Had a good turnout of staff and council members at the community center serving lunch last month. Thank you very much. And we will, we'll do that again this month. Thank you.
Thank you. Vice Mayor?
I don't have anything to report.
Counselor Heisler?
I don't have anything to report.
Counselor Brimhall?
I have a few, a few comments. The school has done a great job, I think, this week, this past couple of months, being able to engage with the youth, the school, the school, the sport athletes have been able to engage with like the younger youth in our, in our community. They recently finished up basketball. They finished up wrestling and it's great seeing the the high schoolers visit with like the elementary age kids and just interact with them. It's so fun seeing them interact. And next month, next week, they're going to have the track team help with the elementary on getting track events going on for the elementary for a few days. I have their own little track event. So I'm excited for that. And last week, they had a, like a drug emotional health awareness event at the high school. We're at the district office and it was a great event. It was sad to see the impact that a lot of things are happening, are having on our youth in our community. And they are going to stick with their current graduation date that they have and next April 10th, they're going to continue, they're going to go back to their original schedule of half-days on Fridays. And so that's exciting for that. And I encourage any of you, if you want to get involved with the town, get involved with the public or the, the schools, reach out to the principal and see how you can help. They're looking for, always seems like, always seems like they're looking for volunteers in different areas, especially with these different offshoots of the community. So if you want to volunteer, always, it's great interacting with the little kids. That's all I got.
Thank you. Counselor Craigbaum?
Thank you, Mayor. This is going to be an ongoing thing. It's just to add to Jim's tracks report. It's called Leave No Trace. That will be the first weekend in June. So it'll be Friday, Saturday, and Sunday. It'll be presented by a team that will come from the National Leave No Trace Group and tracks is the spotlight, especially on our trails. So that was something I'd like you to put on your calendar and look for. We'll have a lot more information as time goes on. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Counselor Craigbaum. The only thing I would like to remind the community is the Blue Ridge Scholarship Fund Annual Golf Tournament at White Mountain Country Club. That will be held on May 6th. All sponsors are $100. Each player is $150 and includes a nice buffet dinner that evening. So White Mountain Country Club is a beautiful, beautiful golf course and typically people can't get on that one because it is a private course. So if you need other information, let me know. And I will turn it over to Keith for your report, please.
You bet. Thank you, Madam Mayor. The month of April is a busy month. We're excited for all the activities that we, that are before us. Few of them are. This Saturday, April 8th, is the Family Easter Party. Over the several years that I know I've been here, the Easter activity has evolved from Mountain Meadow to Park to the Jack Barker Park. And now this year will be at Woodland Lake Park. So that'll run from 11:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. The town will distribute bags of Easter eggs and we have about 20 businesses that have sponsored giant Easter baskets with 500 eggs each. Other highlights would be three food trucks, live music, face painter, lawn games, an Easter maze, and photos with the Easter bunny. So we appreciate all of our staff for their work on this and volunteers from the community. The White Mountain Community Center Lunch Service, just to remind you, is April the 13th. And so if you, as council members, if you'd like to participate in that, please let Tony know. And that'll be at 11:15. Another one that we've, are really proud to be able to help host is the Tillman Honor Run Walk/Walk. That'll be Saturday, April 15th at 9:00 a.m. at Woodland Lake Park. The course will be four loops around the paved path. The Walking Down Ranch, which supports the veterans of our community, will provide a hamburger meal for all registered participants. And they are also asking for donations. So it is free, but if you care to, are able to donate to their cause, please do so. The event is also hosted by the town and the White Mountain Chapter of the ASU Alumni Association and benefits the Pat Tillman Foundation. The Safe House Dinner is Saturday, April 15th at 6:00 p.m. at the Sholo Elks Club. The town's purchased a table, so let Tony know if you can attend. I think we have three that have responded so far, so we need five more at least. If we get more than that, we'll purchase a second table. April the 22nd, there's a lot going on. It's a day full of activities. We have Earth Day. The White Mountain Rotary will plant trees at Mountain Meadow Recreation Complex at 10:00 a.m. Annie is working with the Blue Ridge High School and the nature center on a Billy Creek watershed event at Woodland Lake Park as part of Earth Day. Navajo County Peace Officer Memorial Dedication Ceremony is at 12:00 p.m. at Sholo City Hall. We encourage you, if you can, to come to that. The town helped to contribute to that, that memorial. And that is for fallen officers from our county. And then there'll be a National DEA Prescription Drug Takeback Day, all, all-day event at the Pine Top Lakeside Police Department. That's all I have to report. Yeah.
Thank you, Keith. A lot going on. Okay, that concludes our business in our regular meeting tonight. So our regular meeting is adjourned. I would like to call to order the special meeting of the Town of Pine Top Lakeside Board of Adjustments. And I would just like to remind everybody, if you do wish to speak to any items on this agenda to fill out a form, I know Christie has quite a number of them. And we're going to pause for just a moment and get some folks online on the phone.
Welcome to Zoom. Enter your meeting ID. Enter your participant ID followed by pound. Otherwise, just please enter the meeting password followed by You are in the meeting now. There are three participants in the meeting.
Okay, we'll go ahead then. Item B is called to the public. This is a business meeting of the Board of Adjustments. The town values and welcomes public input. Please address the board as a whole and not individual board members. Please address the board as a whole and not individual board members. Do not address staff or members of the audience. Board action on items brought up is limited by the open meeting law. The board may direct staff to study the matter, reschedule for further consideration, a later date. Items on the agenda are not heard and called to the public, and individuals are limited to three minutes. I don't see anybody who wants to address us during this call to the public, so we'll move on to item C, approval of the minutes. Consider approval of the minutes of the Board of Adjustment Special Meeting held on Sept- excuse me, September thirteenth, two thousand twenty-two. Anybody see any additions or corrections to those minutes?
Is that September thirteenth or fifteenth?
Fifteenth, thank you. Thank you. Vice Mayor? I entertain a motion? Go ahead.
I move to approve the minutes of the Special Meeting of the Board of Adjustment held on September fifteenth, two thousand twenty-two.
Second that.
Thank you. It's been moved and seconded. All in favor, please signify by raising your right hand. Thank you. That carries unanimously. Item D is business before the board. Public comment will be taken at the beginning of each agenda item after the subject has been announced by the chairwoman and explained by staff. Any citizen who wishes may speak one time for five minutes on each agenda item before or after council discussion. Questions from board members, however, may be directed to staff or member of the public through the chairwoman at any time. Item D-one on our agenda tonight is discussion and legal action regarding the appeal of site plan review SPR twenty-three dash two sixty-two for construction of a proposed Dollar Tree at one forty-one West White Mountain Boulevard. Jeremiah?
Good evening, Madam Chair, Vice Chair, members of the Board of Adjustment. On, uh, March ninth, twenty twenty-three, Planning and Zoning Commission, um, reviewed the site plan for Dollar Tree located immediately adjacent to Town Hall at one forty-one West White Mountain Boulevard. The, um, the commission voted four to one to approve the site plan for the Dollar Tree project, and, uh, there were three conditions that were attached to the site plan review. The first condition was the condition that if council did not approve the drainage amendment permitting retention basins, a variance be sought. Uh, council did approve in a, a drainage amendment permitting retention basins. The second item was the condition that a truck turning study be provided. The applicant provided a truck turning study, and I reviewed that and found it, um, acceptable. Then the third condition was the condition that a six-foot privacy fence and trees must be on the property along the residential side of Summer Haven. Uh, an appeal was filed on the site plan review, um, by the residents of Summer Haven, particularly, uh, Ms. Joanne Rollick. Hope I said the name correct?
Yes, you did.
Okay. Um, and their request was that, um, uh, that a eight-foot decorative CMU, uh, block wall be constructed along between the subdivision and, uh, the project, this project site for the Dollar Tree. And so that was, that is the key to this appeal, is the, um, the request for, and it was, it was discussed during the planning and zoning meeting. My initial recommendation was a six-foot CMU block wall, and it came back that it, it was, um, the representative from Delaney Property Group didn't want to proceed with that, but said that they would agree to a s- uh, six-foot wood fence along that property line. And so that was, uh, ultimately what was decided, and that condition became a six-foot wooden privacy fence. And, and with also the condition that trees be planted every fifteen feet along that, uh, southern boundary there. So tonight, uh, we'll hear from both the applicant and the appellant. The applicant initially had many, had quite a few deficiencies on their project, and so my initial recommendation to the Planning and Zoning Commission was to deny it. They did rectify, uh, the majority of those, uh, code deficiencies that I had enumerated, and they had, they had, uh, addressed all of them except for the, uh, site screening along Summer Haven, which was an oversight, but they had, so that was where that, uh, the other condition came in. Initially, they were missing a number of trees. They were, um, they had shown the building as a metal building. Um, they didn't have the screening in the back around the HVAC, and they were missing a number of street trees as well. So they, um, did submit, uh, an amended, uh, an amended site plan that showed all of those except for the screening, and so that's how we arrived at the conditions on March ninth.
Thank you, Jeremiah. Um, we have some representatives of the Dollar Tree, the developers, on the phone. Would you guys mind introducing yourselves so we know who's listening in?
Yeah. Hey, thank you for giving the time to hear us tonight. Uh, this is Michael Delaney with Delaney Property Group. We've also got Garrett Baker with Delaney Property Group, who's our project manager, and, uh, him and Jeremiah have been working a lot hand-in-hand to see this project through. And, uh, so that is who is on the line from Delaney Property Group. I'm sorry I couldn't be there. We're actually on spring break this week, and so, um, we, uh, otherwise I would've been there and in person.
Okay, thank you, Mike. Um, any questions for Jeremiah before we start with public comment? Okay. Thank you, Jeremiah. Standby, please. Um, I will call up Joanne Rollick first.
Good evening, City Council. Um, the reason that we're here is to talk a little bit about the Dollar Tree. Obviously, it is right behind our property. Um, our number one concern obviously has to do with store security. Dollar Trees don't have the best reputation, um, for secured environments with, um, out, you know, there was a CNN report that went on that talked a little bit about the lack of security measures. They're not interested in having security personnel onboard. There's a lot of traffic that goes in and out of there. Um, our second problem is obviously with the wall. We all know we live up here in Lakeside Pine Top. Come on, a wood fence, how long do they last up here? And who's gonna maintain that wood fence? You know, they don't wanna pay for a block wall, and I understand that, but that wood fence will be down. And who's gonna take care of that? Who's gonna monitor that? Who's gonna make sure that that's what's happening and that, and that we do have the privacy? We also have an issue with lights, noise, everything else that's gonna go on with that. Um, what we're trying to do is, is trying to be good neighbors, and we have a nice, quiet community with, um, a lot of older personnel. Um, we don't need the noise. We don't want the noise. We don't want the, the, um, the lights and everything else that's going on. Um, they do, dollar stores have their place. But do we need dollar stores? Do we need five of them in the course of two and a half miles? Really? I mean, how often, you know, really, do we really need them? I mean, we go into dollar stores and, um, you're, the understatement with it, with the general populace is, is that they're cheaper and because of everything that's going on with inflation and everything, we wanna go and, we wanna buy the cheapest we can get. Is dollar store cheap? No, dollar stores aren't cheap. Went into a dollar store, bought sliced olives, two dollars. Went into another grocery store, and they were less than a dollar. But the perception is that they're cheap, and people are going to them because they think they need that. But that hurts our economy. It's gonna hurt our property values. It's gonna help hurt everything we've got, and what's it going to do to Safeway? Dollar stores have put grocery stores out of business. New Orleans has a law that there cannot be a dollar store within two miles of each other. Why? Because of the competition issue. Because they, people can't make it. We all need to work together. We want a nice, beautiful, wonderful community that we've got. Do we really wanna have a dollar store on every other block? I don't see it. I don't understand it. Um, I've asked questions of people. I asked people on planning and zoning, made several phone calls to try to find out what the rationale for wanting another dollar store was. And do you know that I got absolutely no response? None. No one even would bother to pick up the phone and call me back. I don't understand it, and I wish somebody would explain it to me, but we don't want it. Our community doesn't want the noise and everything else. You've got a gravel road going on. You've got all the trucks and stuff that are gonna be unloading in the back of that building. Is there an ordinance in this town that they can only come between eight and ten? Or are they gonna be unloading trucks in there all night? Two, three, four o'clock in the morning? What kind of concessions are we making? What kind of concessions is the town making for them? Most of the time, when you put a commercial building in, you know, the, the city wants it so badly that they're willing to put in sidewalks, they're willing to put in driveways, they're willing to put in all this stuff. What, what kind of concessions are we making, if any? I haven't been able to find out that information either. We're really, we love it up here, and we're a really small community, and we're older people, and we really enjoy it being here. But this is not something that we want under these conditions. I don't think it's too much to ask for an eight-foot wall, not wood, that's gonna fall apart in a year because of the weather we have up here. I think we need an eight-foot block wall to try to be able to deal with this if we have no other choice. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments, Joanne. The next person who would like to speak is Carol Stroob. You would come up, please?
Good evening. Thanks for giving me an opportunity to speak. Uh, my husband and I moved here about fourteen years ago. We searched every small town, and we chose Lakeside because it was an adorable small town. Uh, we used to, when I was younger, we used to go visit Prescott on a regular basis. But Prescott has gotten so big now. The, the whole thing was to go there and hang out in the county courthouse square. It's so big now, they have a freeway. It's so big now, you can't stand to go in it. And I'm really wondering if that's the same goal that Sholo Lakeside Pine Top all has, is to... I know the government looks, I retired from the government. I know they look at revenues, but I know the department of revenue doesn't include expenses. How much, expenses are gonna go up. They only look at how much revenue's gonna go up. And I don't think the revenue from a Dollar Tree is gonna go up much. There's already two dollar stores, and they're never busy. And so I just don't know, understand how a third one could, could carry its weight. Um, excuse me. Dollar stores generally tend to cheapen a town. They lower values of everything. People's, oh, I'll go to the Dollar Store, 'cause that's all I can afford. That's all the people you're, that you're gonna draw in also, and chase away the people that came because of the beautiful environment. The, if worse were to come, there are a lot of empty buildings that could satisfy the needs of a Dollar Tree before building a new building, tearing down all the trees that are gonna have to come down. One of these days, we're not gonna live in the largest pine forest in the world. I, I think that the town should seriously think about not just growing because there's an opportunity, but growing because it's a wise choice for the town. You want to maintain the adorable, the town feel, city feel, whatever you wanna call it, that draws people here, not the dollar people that are drawn here. Because, enough said. I just, I would hope that this town would not turn into Prescott, because Prescott used to be adorable, and it's not anymore. I hope Lakeside stays adorable. Thank you.
Thank you, Carol. Uh, Jeffrey Pott, if you'd come up, please?
Thank you, Mayor, Council. The residents living behind and around proposed Dollar Tree are demanding a more big solid wa- wall to be constructed as a, as, a solid wall constructed of block as, as the wood fence is proposed. The wood fence would be needing upkeep all the time. Um, it won't keep down the noise pollution from the traffic or the deliveries of the customer traffic, nor will it keep debris from falling through into our personal yards. Requesting an eight-foot decorative block wall to put in place of a wooden fence. This will ensure most traffic noise, lights, and debris beyond control to stay within the grounds of the development. A wooden fence will not keep the up, would, would need upkeep in a few years, and who's gonna do that? The employees? The said fence would be a visualizer as it breaks down over the years in the current future. Has an EPA study been done regarding wildlife traffic and nest building and deer use in that area for the community? They always come through there. Also, I'm concerned the fact that I do know of the flooding from Highway two sixty. It comes down two sixty into my house. My front yard and my den has flooded because of the flooding coming down. I know it's probably not their concern, but it's a concern that if the retention basin is not correctly, is not built correctly, that it may create more flooding. We're requesting the city to hear our voices and concerns and put an eight-foot decorative block wall. The Pine Top Lakes and Collections Center was required by Navajo County to do so. They had to put up a eight-foot wall or a fence to meet the needs and visual peace of the residents surrounding the area. Snowflake City requires that the Maverick Store install a decorative block wall when they remodeled it to separate the store from the houses behind it. We hope you hear us and hopefully come to some sort of a common ground.
Thank you, Jeff.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, council members. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak tonight. I have to say that I'm taken back a little bit. I thought I was in trouble, and I live over here on Jaeger Lane. Can't imagine what these folks who are long here are feeling like. But I do have concerns about this coming into our neighborhood. And it's, it's quite ironic that on the way to the meeting tonight, when I tried to get out of the street up here, it was about a four-minute ordeal, just with regular traffic. We have a fairly concentrated level of traffic right here in this little area where Safeway Store is, the banks, uh, some of the restaurants, and so on. If we add a Dollar Store, whatever the franchise name is, I think that's going to cause many We don't have to worry about any potholes, 'cause there's already potholes everywhere. But I can see that, uh, there's gonna be a lot of problems with traffic trying to get in and out of there and trying to beat the traffic that's going up and down the highway. Ma'am, I can't remember your name, but you brought up the issue of crime. Anytime you put in such a business, and I don't mean to sound insulting at all, but reality is truth, truth is reality. It attracts a certain type of clientele. By the sheer fact that they don't have a lot of security involved with their businesses, they become a target for crash and runs and whatever it is they call those things. Not to mention the fact that just shoplifting occurs. It's going to be an attraction for who knows what to park in the parking lot and do who knows what. And do we really want that right next to our council chamber, our city building? I mean, that, there is such a thing as perception, and there is such a thing as, um, optics. Again, I don't mean to seem harsh to the gentleman listening on the phone about his business, but those types of stores are not a very appealing retail outlet to be coming into your neighborhood. It seems to me that we've moved past this kind of meeting, and I hope that's not the case. I don't know when a vote is going to be taken on this. I just heard of this earlier this week when I read about it in the newspaper. But it seems you've got architecture drawings, site plans, all the necessary accoutrements to put in a building, and I really hope that's not the situation, because there's a lot of people here that wanna be heard. And I wanna be heard. I am a full-time, registered voter, citizen of Lake Top Pine So- Lakeside Pine Top, excuse me, and I'm proud of that. But I can't see a business like this adding more pride to my community. Please vote your conscience. Please vote what is best for your community, not what is best for the coffers, not what is best for the businessmen on the phone. What's best for the people that live here, work here, do all the things that everybody does in their life right here, not some gentleman that can't even make it to the meeting. Thank you.
Thank you, Don. Please, keep some decorum here tonight. We'll just wait for a moment for him, then.
Okay. He can speak in a few minutes if he completes his call. I would like to make a couple of responses to some comments that were made before I open it up for the developer, for Micah Jarrett, to speak. As far as the wood fence goes, if that's what ends up being on this property, we have town maintenance codes and our staff will be monitoring that. And if it falls into any disrepair at all, they will be, it will be a code violation so that wood fence will have to be maintained continuously. My concern here is a lot of people seem to talk against Dollar General or Dollar Tree, but not really against this project, this construction project. The Board of Adjustment's application is to disprove of a PUD, which this is not a P, or, excuse me, a conditional use permit. This was a site plan review. So I'm kind of confused as to why this, you know, the application is talking about a conditional use permit. You know, there's a lot of points that have been brought up. And I think there's a lot of things to talk about. Mike, would you like to address any of these?
Hey, I would, thank you. And, you know, I just want to remind the council and members of the public that the reason we came to this site is it was on the market for sale. It'd been on the market for sale for a very long time, I believe. You know, it was, the price had been decreased from where they had originally marketed it and it's zone commercial. And so we are purchasing the property and are under contract and going through the permitting process per the zoning that is applicable to this property. So, you know, we really are not trying to do anything or create any problems or, you know, like I've said in the past, be a bad neighbor. We're, we're just building on a piece of the property that is zoned for that use. And so, you know, as far as the fence goes, an eight-foot decorative CMU wall is a very expensive wall. And if it was my neighbor, I would come to them and say, "Hey, would you be interested in doing a wall?" And I'd say, "Well, I really can't because of the cost, but I tell you what I would do. I would credit the amount that it would cost for me to do a six or eight foot." I'd do an eight-foot wooden fence here if that's what our neighbors require in lieu of a six foot. We're already putting trees and a privacy fence there. The trees are going to create screening, but, you know, I would say, you know, if you guys want to cover the difference, then that'll be fine. But, I mean, for us to come out and build a huge decorative wall that is not in the, per code, I mean, we have to look at everything when we're coming in and building this and cost is one of our issues. But as I've always said, this was zone commercial and for sale and that's why we're here. No, no other reason. We didn't pick this property to, because I joined a residential subdivision. That's certainly not what we, it's not ideal for us because we're, you know, we're here. We've made a trip to the Planning Commission. I'm here on this call tonight on my kid's spring break because, you know, we're next to a subdivision. So no, I would, I would prefer not to be there, but this is what was available at the time and, you know, this is, we're just trying to push forward and do what is best for our client and what was available to us to purchase and develop. So I think that's pretty much kind of sums it up on our end.
Thank you, Mike. Council members, discussions, comments? Counselor Snitzer?
Turn on your mic, Jim. Yeah, I read through this letter. It's a very well-written letter, but I made several notes. The, I want to skip to a couple of things at the bottom of it first. One of them was, would you want to have you and your family's residence next to Dollar Store? No, I wouldn't. I would not want that. But that doesn't mean that, sitting here for the town, that I would agree that gee, everything that Jim Snitzer doesn't want to have, we just won't do. The, on the wall, which is also down here, I think it is absolutely reasonable. It's what's called buffering, when you separate residential properties from commercial properties. I think it's absolutely reasonable to insist that that be a masonry wall. I do not agree with eight feet mostly because I'm worried that that would, there's an old Robert Frost poem about walls and it says, "Before I built a wall, I'd want to know who I was walling in and who I was walling out." And I think it might be excessive to have a neighborhood wall be an eight-foot wall, a six-foot wall, I think would, would do it. I do not agree that a wooden wall would provide adequate buffering, especially because it doesn't do anything for sound. So, so I agree with your sentiment, but I'm not sure I agree that the town should take the actions that you asked for. So let me start at the top. First of all, this is, this is commercial property. And if I were to take this letter, I did it, and I said, "I'm going to," everywhere where it says Dollar Store, instead, I'm going to put Dollar Store, Mexican Restaurant, fast food store, convenience market and Walmart. And everything in here now applies to that string of things. We've got a ton of convenience stores, we've got a ton of everything. Somebody else could say, you know, "We don't need any more real estate agents." The, and then the next, it says the Dollar Stores threaten grocery stores like Safeway and Eddies. Maybe they do, I'm willing to believe that. But that, that says the town has a duty, you know, if you're proposing that, you're saying the town has a duty to pick the winners and losers before they can even come here. No, we don't want, you know, we've already, especially my brother's real estate agency, we don't need another real estate agency to compete with my brother. The town, that's just wrong. The town council shouldn't pick winners and losers. That's the function of the marketplace. The next one, again, it's absolutely true, somewhat. I don't know that Dollar Stores create this. It says that they provide not great food. That's true of all those things I just said, except Mexican restaurants, they provide great food. And, and basically poverty. Well, I just cannot bring myself to believe that Dollar Stores create poverty. I think Dollar Stores move into areas when they see a marketing opportunity to sell people things those people want to buy. The, I'll say something here that I believe that, I mean, I do not like the idea of Dollar Stores. I don't see them as a high-quality thing to add to a town, but we have had people consistently fighting against bringing quality developments to this town. And guess what you're left with? If you don't attract quality developments to your town, you're left with developments that, at least in my humble opinion, are not quality. The next one is, there's a question, this is the worst case in this letter, so I'm picking on it. But there's a question I wish I had learned to ask when I was 13. I ask it all the time now that I'm old and wise, or at least old. The question is, "So what?" And it says, "In January of 2022, according to the FDA, an inspection of a distribution facility in Arkansas revealed unsanitary conditions, including a major rodent infestation where there were more than 1,100 dead rodents." So what? We're not talking about Arkansas, we're not talking about distributions and we're not talking about 1,100 dead rodents. So, you know, that's the worst example, but there are others examples in there where I kept asking myself, "So what?" There was one thing here that I think is just incorrect. It says the Dollar Stores have a way of reducing tax revenues. Well, that, that piece of land in particular, but Dollar Stores in general, our town is plagued with empty, in fact, our town has been hollowed out, in my opinion, with empty storefronts. And that, that was commercial property. It was going to be something. Dollar Stores, at least compared to being emptied land or an empty storefront, they do generate tax revenue. And, and then down below it talks about, well, they're, you know, Dollar Stores edge out all these other stores and reduce the tax basis due to the closing of stores. I think that's more Walmart you're talking about. The Dollar Stores moved in here after Walmart moved in here and kind of emptied out all the other things in town. And I'm no fan of Walmart either, but I think Walmart absolutely devastates small towns like us. The Dollar Stores, like I say, they're meeting the needs of the people that shop there. So if those, if those, if the Dollar Stores were all closed today, I do not, in my heart of hearts, believe that all those people would switch to shopping at Safeway. I think all those people, if they aren't shopping at the Dollar Stores in Pine Top Lakeside, they're going to be down at Walmart. So I'm not looking in favor of Walmart. Let's see, the one that I have left is, this, this store will have a direct effect on my property value. We hear that all the time up here and I was on the planning and zoning and I heard that all the time, too. I don't know that. You need to prove, when you say something like that, you need to have some proof, like a real estate appraisal or other examples. For all I know, the fact that your home in Summer Haven would now be an easy walking distance of a store might make it more attractive for people to live there, not less attractive. I just don't know. So just be careful making claims without proving them. So the, I don't see anything in here that would cause me not to accept it, except on the fence issue and I, and people have anticipated this, I'm sure Jeremiah has, but I think the fence is absolutely reasonable. I want to do something that the next time a situation like this comes up, we would do the same thing. So somewhere else in town, if there's a residential area and a commercial area that come right together, then I think we've got at least the most minimal buffering I can think of that could be acceptable would be a masonry wall that would provide a clear, and I like, very much like the idea of the trees and plantings. We had the same kind of situation on another property and we kind of came to the same conclusion. We would require a masonry fence. And I'm sorry if that cost Dollar Store, the people making the Dollar Store, I'm sorry if that cost them a lot of money, but that's not my problem. That's their problem. And they need to be a good neighbor and if the price of being a good neighbor is a, is a masonry wall, then I think they have to provide it. And if that, providing that wall, which is entirely reasonable for us to ask as a town, if that's not acceptable to them, I would say, "Well, don't let the door hit you on your way out of town. We'll find someone else to be in that spot." It's a very desirable property and if they, if they establish a business there, I wish them well. I really wish, somebody else said, "I really wish they would fill one of the vacant buildings." I've said that before and every time I've said it, I've been told they look, I don't know if these guys have, but they've looked at the vacant buildings and they didn't find a vacant building that they thought would fit their needs, which might include the building or the location. So anyway, sorry for taking up so much time. I'm very sympathetic and if I was living there, I'd feel the same way you do, but that doesn't mean as a town, we should start picking winners and losers.
Thank you, Counselor Snitzer. Counselor Smith?
I'm going to be much shorter than Counselor Snitzer was. But when I, when I look at something like this, I think, well, what are the issues with planning and zoning? And there's a lot of stuff in here that has nothing to do with planning and zoning. I agree with the eight-foot requirement being a little too high for our, I think, six-foot block would, would, would be fine for that use. And we think alike because I read this and I said, "Okay, change Dollar Store to Target." We don't have any problem with anything if it's a Target, but we, we have to stay away from picking and choosing, like Jim said. So I think the block wall is, would be the issue for me to, to separate that commercial from the residential.
Vice Mayor?
I'll say I do have reservations about a fourth Dollar Store in this tiny area. That being said, and I would hope, and Mike, I would ask you, were any feasibility studies conducted by you or Dollar Tree? But then we go to, my understanding is, what this is about tonight is a fence, a separation from the store, from the neighborhood. And I too would say they would need to put up a block wall to do that. And I would say eight foot looks good, but based on our code, six foot, I think, is what, you know, would be acceptable due to that. But certainly, I think if they want to do business there, I think that six-foot wall would be a requirement for them.
Mr. Heisler?
I do have a couple of comments. I first would like to address to Jeremiah or maybe to Keith, I'm not sure which, but she asked some pretty pointed questions, so I wanted to ask those in a way they could be answered. Has the town made any concessions to bring this Dollar Store into this town?
No, no, we have not.
So we're, right, I think it's important that we all understand, we're not trying to bring them to town. We haven't provided them any concessions, we're not asking them one way or the other. I will say this, the gentleman on the phone, Mike, I believe, made a comment about being a good neighbor. And I feel like I'm a good neighbor. When my neighbor's driveway needs plowed, I plow it. If they have pine needles out front that need to be hauled off, I take care of that for them. It costs me money to do that. And if, to be a good neighbor in this instance, it takes an eight-foot block wall. And I, I will say, in this particular front, the neighbors to this property are the neighbors requesting the eight-foot block wall, in my opinion. I would say if they want an eight-foot block wall, I think as a good neighbor, you would provide it. I would absolutely do that under the definition, what I believe is a good neighbor. As far as personal feelings goes, I, I would echo the Vice Mayor's statement that I'm not happy about a Dollar Store going in town of Pine Top Lakeside either. We have plenty of them. With that said, I don't believe it's the, it is the place of the council to operate under the, under feeling. We operate under code, we operate under state law, and this is a private property owner that wants to utilize their own property. And I don't see any way through our town code or through state law that we can prohibit them from building this store, but we can put some concessions or some, what's the word I'm looking at? Restrictions in place to try to make it a little more bearable for the neighbors. So I, I just wanted to make it clear that we're hearing what you're saying, but, but I'm, I'm at a loss just as much as you are about what, what do I do about it? There's nothing I can do. It's a private property and as a private property owner, I don't necessarily want different things being cast on me, especially if they're just arbitrarily made up depending on the site or the facility that's going in. You know, I want something that's listed in town code or listed in state law, something that I can reference, and I think that the town has done that. The only other question I had, and maybe it's not appropriate for this because I know really what we're talking about in this appeal is a block wall, was the fire code. And I did notice that Pine Top Fire has a lot of stipulations in here that seems like have not been met. I, I know the water in this area very well. It seems like this building will require a fire sprinkler system as is indicated, and I'm just wondering if they have made any, had any communication with Pine Top Fire as far as are they going to meet these conditions or not?
So I did bring this point up at the Planning and Zoning Commission and Mike Delaney with Delaney Property Group. Wasn't a depression that they wouldn't have, wouldn't be required to have a sprinklered building, but after review by Pine Top Fire, they said that they wanted to see a fire flow analysis before they would make that determination, that it could likely trigger the requirement for that building to be sprinkled.
And you don't know if they've had any further discussions or if they've provided that flow?
So I haven't, I haven't seen any studies or anything provided or the flow test, no.
Okay, thank you.
And that flow test is a requirement of the developer to provide?
Correct.
Thank you. Counselor Brimhall?
Thank you. So based off of that conversation, are we able to, are we able to make sure that they meet those requirements before we even approve any of this? Or can it not be part of a, hey, our stipulation is going to have a six or an eight-foot decorative concrete wall, you got to make sure that you have that fire flow analysis and make sure that if it's going to cost you the amount that some... Are we able to, is that able to be all rolled into this altogether?
Yeah, so we, I looked at things that are, could be required in a site plan review, and, and one of those specifically is additional studies can be required per seventeen dot eighty-four oh eight zero dot C dot two one. And these are things like drainage studies, traffic impact studies, environmental impact studies, but fire flow analysis could be included in that as well.
Okay.
Doesn't really limit what type of study could be included in the site plan review, and it could be attached as a condition. And I think it would, it would help drive the decision for the Dollar Tree and, and so they have a realistic idea of what it's going to cost in hand instead of be blindsided down the road if, if it is indeed a requirement.
Okay, thank you. Another comment I have is, during the Planning and Zoning Commissioner Ferno stated that the, I'm quoting him now, stated that the economic development goals of Pine Top Lakeside general plan are to expand the diversity of the economic base to help create a well-rounded economy, and bolster the employment base while strengthening existing enterprises. So I think, you know, we talked about, oh, if there was a Target coming in, or if there was another Dollar Store coming in, we'd have these, or another type of Mexican restaurant coming in, we would have, we would be asking the same questions. I don't know if we would in the sense that we already have three or four of these in this area, and if, and if, you know, if Mike wants to say, oh, but we'll offer a handful of jobs, we know that this, our current economy up here is struggling with jobs, so pretty much you would just be hiring from somebody else, and then they would be losing those employees. So I don't really think this is an economy that is going to bring any additional type of jobs to our area or improve our economy. Are there any things that we could do to say, like, are there any things that we could do to ask them if they're able to have, if they've done like an economic study or economic impact study about this, or do their own stores, other stores around them that are kind of similar to this economic graphic? And I, I don't want to say like, oh, economic graphic of we're pinpointing a specific individual. I mean, I know dozens of people who shop at these type of stores for specific reasons, but still, I would just like to know, like, have, can we, can we add that to, an economic analysis to that commission, condition as well as?
I believe the answer is yes, based on the section of the code that I just read, that we can require other, additional studies.
Okay.
So if that's something that the Board of Adjustment would like to require, then they can make that in their motion. My recommendation is that, it was indicated that by, by Delaney Property Group that they wanted to be good neighbors. The, the issue that I hear in the appeal is that the neighbors want them to be good neighbors. So the request is, and it was my initial request as well before planning and zoning, to put in a six-foot CMU block wall and also require the trees every fifteen foot. And then any other conditions that the Board of Adjustment may deem necessary. Mirror, and then one of the other things that we considered was the possibility that mirroring the site could help attenuate some of the sound, because one of the things that was brought up during the commission meeting was truck backing noises, that the neighbors would hear that early in the morning when the trash comes every day. And so I think, I believe that if they do mirror the site, that that will help attenuate some of that noise in addition to the fence that's being requested, the screening CMU block wall. So that is the, that's the, that's the recommendation, basically mirror the site. I think that it would fit, it would be the same, same shape, just flipped, so the back would be towards Summer Haven, and the parking lot would be towards Town Hall, and then the request of the six-foot CMU block wall. And any other conditions that you guys want to attach?
Counselor Brimhall, go ahead.
Question on that, so if we were to flip the, if they were to flip the building to the other side, how close would it be to those homes? Like, would it be a, now, instead of having trees, they look outside the window, outside their window, back window, they look out a massive building? Like, I mean, is that, is that that close to them?
You can see in the site plan, I don't think it would be, I mean, yeah, you have the difference between the parking lots. Basically, the parking lot would be in the front, and the, and the back of the building would be back there, so.
Oh, okay.
It, it would be, yeah, so to answer your question, yes, the building's going to be closer, but the overall site would be generally the same. I mean, I'm not going to engineer the project for them, but it looks like that would be feasible.
Okay, thank you.
Counselor Craigbaum, did you have anything to add?
Not much, really. That's the great thing about being the last one down the line. I certainly agree with Counselor Snitzer and with Counselor Heisler, and I was also concerned with the fire department, that they need to do the water pressure or flow before knowing whether they are going to have to have a sprinkler system, which can be quite expensive, I should think. And so the block wall and the sprinkler system are concerns of mine. I do agree that I would not want to live next to the Dollar Store, and the fact that we have so many of them is, it's redundant to have another one. But, and I can't understand how they would have done a really comprehensive study to see that this is a necessary item that is going to make a lot of money for the company. So, but I don't think we get to vote, yes, you can have this building or not, because it's private property, and I do respect that.
I would like to add a few things, and playing devil's advocate, they've met all the conditions for a site plan. They've met all of our building codes, all of our lighting restrictions, drainage studies, and I think it's naive of us to even suggest that they haven't done an economic impact study, or some kind of study for them to see if it's feasible, and if they, it would be profitable for them to come to our community. So I think that's kind of, almost insulting for people to ask, have they done that? Because I'm sure Mike and his group have done that. Why would they come to a community if it's not going to be successful? So, so for us to think that, and it's no different than saying we don't need another coffee shop or a Mexican food restaurant, or the whole litany of things that Counselor Snitzer brought up. If, if they feel like it's going to be profitable, then by all means, they should be able to come to our community. And they've met all the requirements, so for us to now say, oops, we want you to flip your building, that's going to be additional engineering costs. Is that really fair for us to do when they've met, met the requirements? Mike, do you have any comments on that?
I'm a little confused, because I thought, and I, the neighborhood was asking for a wall, and, and that was the real purpose of this, this, this call, and, and, you know, the, the, as far as the fire, we just received the Fire Marshal's report when we received the packet for this, this meeting, I believe, maybe it was last Wednesday. We've been in touch with the Fire Marshal, we've, we are, we are getting all the necessary stuff that he's required, but I, I'm not, I'm not really clear exactly how we, we've ended up in a, a scenario where we're talking about flipping the building when it, you know, the, the site plan's been approved, we've, we've showed the truck, I, I guess I don't know exactly what their, you know, is in an appeal of the overall, I, I guess I'm just a little confused right now how we would put all these other conditions on it when we're this far along, and, and it sounds like the only real issue is the block wall.
Mike, I think that was a staff concept, that maybe it would mitigate the impact of commercial development right next to residential, just a thought that might help. That's, if I'm not mistaken. We, we do have, did Mr. Wright come back from his call? Would you like to come up and speak now, because I have another request as well? Please come up and introduce yourself.
Yes, my name is Clint Wright, I'm a Summer Haven resident. Having listened to most of this conversation when I returned, there are so many issues that I would love to talk about, but to make a joke, as this gentleman does, you get a little older, sometimes the gray matter folds, and you don't remember them all. But to address your issue, it may not be your job to pick and choose, but I bet if you ask everybody in Summer Haven to give us whether we wanted a restaurant, pick one, but you said a Mexican restaurant, and so on and so on, okay, McDonald's, I don't care, I guarantee you, we'd pick a Mexican restaurant over the Dollar Tree. So whether or not you want to pick one or not, I would, because I'm telling you, we have to live next to that. And as far as Mike, if he's listening, you did all these plans and you did all this stuff. Most of us, a lot of us that live back here aren't here. I get curious when I attend these kinds of meetings, why is it that we weren't informed until the eleventh hour? Perhaps Mike would have had some input from neighbors to be a good neighbor. He would have developed site plans that might have met everyone's needs. But the, but I think the issue is, is tonight, not being in here the whole time, and I apologize for that, but an emergency drew me away. I walked back in and all we're talking about is the fence. That's, that's concessionary, but it's not what I drove from Tucson today to come to this meeting for. I'd rather have the restaurant, the Mexican restaurant, than another Dollar Store or Dollar-type store. So you may not pick, but if you want to be good stewards of this community and, and the people that pay taxes up here, it might be incumbent upon you to start thinking about it. You said, Mayor, that, that all these studies have been done, have you seen those studies? Have you looked at those studies? Have you hired an attorney to determine the galages that? Has anybody talked to ADOT? This is a highway out here, a state highway, I wonder what, do they have any considerations? So again, I understand it's a property zone commercial, and something's going to go in here someday. We're not naive enough to know that that won't happen, but type of business that goes in here is important to us. So for me, that's the first consideration, and the wall is secondary, six-foot wall minimum. An eight-foot, eight-foot wall will help with, you know, this flip-flop you're talking about, you can flip it, but you're still going to see it. Somebody's mobiles, there's a house over there, the second story is where his bedroom is, he's going to see it. So, you know, if you're going to make an excuse for him and let him come in here, at least do an eight-foot wall. The rest of that is nonsense, I think. So feasibility studies and money, the dilution effect of another store coming in here will affect those down there sooner or later. You may, he may hire three employees, but you may lose two or three down the road because their revenues drop. So, but no one's really looked into that, is my guess. So I appreciate your time, thank you.
Thank you. I think my comments were more directed to the fact that a feasibility study, economic impact, is not really part of a site plan review, and for us to, to suggest that a business hasn't done their homework is, is not, not the right thing for us to suggest. Why would they be coming in?
Mayor, can I clarify something really quick, please?
Yes, go ahead.
So I, I mentioned economic, economic impact. I'm not stating, if, if your comment is towards what I mentioned, it's not towards Mike and the Dollar Store, it's more on the economic impact to the community. What is it going to, how is it going to impact the community, the stores around it, the, whatever they have done? And, and they've done this all over the United States, or they have stores all over the place, so to say that they may have never done this before, or if it's not required to them, I think it'd be beneficial for us to know, like, well, how is this going to impact our community in that realm? Sure, have they done, obviously, yeah, they're, they know, they thought they can make money here, they're willing to invest the money here. You know, we see stores across different parts of the state that have those separate Dollar Stores have gone out of business, even though they did, they thought it was feasible. My main concern is, what is the impact going to be to the businesses around here? Can we request one of, I know we're able to request that they do a study of that, of that type of impact. That, that was more my end of the comment, is how's it impact our community, the economic impact, and not, is it even profitable, profitable to them? I just want to clarify.
Thank you, thank you. I was kind of actually referring to some of the public comments. So we have a couple more people that would like to address this, Pat DeRozier?
Thank you for taking my late request to speak. Based on the comments that we got from the board tonight, I was compelled to speak because there's a lot of talk about this being commercial property. And we've heard this in other meetings in the past, not related to this property, but about what does commercial zoning mean? But you have your zoning, and you have your general plan. And I have not heard anybody speak about the general plan, except for the reference to Todd Ferno. So in your general plan, you have a vision statement that says, we are committed to preserving our town's friendly mountain heritage and environmental attributes for present and future generations to share and enjoy, including opportunities for outdoor activities, interacting with wildlife, and enjoying the natural beauty of our lakes, creeks, meadows, forests. The objective is to provide a growing and diverse economy with meaningful employment opportunities, does this apply, and well, providing for a unique and exceptional quality of life for our residents and visitors. But most importantly, what I find you speaking about tonight is, the general plan has a vision, and it has objectives and policies, and the board has a responsibility to honor the requests for this adjustment, for the block wall, the block wall, or whatever else that you might feel, think fits. But here, here we go. Here's your number one objective, protect existing properties from adverse impacts created, created by new adjacent users. That is in your object, the number one item in your objectives. So the other one is, improve the image of Pine Top Lakeside. Are we doing that with this decision or the plan we have here? And create a strong sense of community. The last one is, there's eight items on this objectives, but the ones that apply mostly to this, this subject is, pursue land use goals, also mindful of the rights of individual property owners. So as you consider this, please take your responsibility to your objectives, your visions, your goals, as it relates to the requests of these homeowners. Thank you.
Pat? Please, please hold your applause. We have another individual who wishes to speak, and I'm probably going to butcher your first name, I apologize, Dorit Gillespie?
You said it exactly right.
Pardon me?
You said it exactly right.
Oh, well, good. Well, come on up there.
All right.
I wanted to speak to the council, thank you for allowing me to do that. And I wanted to do it on the basis of actually what Ms. DeRozier just said. And that has to do with the general appearance, the general lifestyle, the general happiness of life, and all of those things. And I wanted to say to Councilman Snitzer, I thought your comments, well, it was, it was almost like sitting in a lecture hall, a good one, where you learn some good things in a good order, and it's well thought out. So thank you for that. But I did have one difference of opinion, and I think that, you know, if the, if the objective of the council is to help provide the residents with a good, and not just the residents, obviously, the people that make up our businesses as well, but if we're, if the council is to do that, I think you are absolutely within, I don't know about your own bylaws, but within the bylaws of working council, to say, yes, we do want to pick who comes to work here. We want to see this street look like whatever you want it to look like, and make some effort, some percentage of the improvements to fit into this lifestyle and happiness and enjoying nature and so forth. So that's all I wanted to say, and thank you.
Thank you, Dorit. Okay, council, any other questions, comments? Go ahead, Counselor Heisler.
Jeremiah, or, or maybe Keith, I'm not sure who this goes to, but we've got some comments about, this is about a block wall, and I, and I can understand how we read into, at the end of the day, we're talking about a block wall, that was what was referenced in the letter. I guess my question is, there's many, many other things that are listed in this, so are we, as the Board of Adjustments in this appeal, are we limited to the block wall, or are we, for example, an economic study being required based on the fact? being required based on the fact that in this letter, it talks about the, what, what these stores will do to a community, what they will do to the, the pay of the employees that they employ? I guess what I'm trying to say is, what is the purview of this appeal?
So basically, the Planning and Zoning Commission already approved the site plan review, and there was an appeal filed. So that opens up the door now. Basically, this is round two of the site plan review. And it's, we have, we have in hindsight, we can see what was done at the commission. And it's your, your guys' decision tonight if you want to uphold those, if you want to amend those, or if you want to deny. So it's no different than it was at Planning and Zoning Commission, other than this is the appeal from there. So it's basically a brand-new site plan review.
So then everything that we're talking about is on the table. We could, we could flip the building. We can, we can, we can require an economic impact study. We can, we can require that they meet fire flow before they move forward with anything else on this project.
Yeah, so the, the, I think the initial basis, and correct me if I'm wrong, Mrs. Rollick, her appeal was for the fence, but she also indicated in the letter, as you mentioned, economic impacts of dollar stores. So I don't think it's a complete stretch to reassess all of the conditions since two of them were no longer applicable that were given initially, that being the drainage retention, which council approved, and the other being the turning study that was reviewed and, and deemed acceptable. So really, there was only one condition, but if, if the Board of Adjustment in its, in acting in the sense of a site plan review, I don't see that other things are out of the ask here. It's basically a site plan review.
Thank you.
Councilor Snitzer.
I'd like to add something just based on my experience in planning and zoning. The, the, our, our hands are not totally tied, but they're also not totally free. Decision that we make can be appealed. The appeal is a judicial appeal. And the usual thing is to say, what they did was capricious or discriminatory. So, so let's just say, it's certainly clear that that was commercial property. It's certainly clear that a dollar store is a permitted use under that zoning. There's this gray area that says, "We can apply reasonable requirements that comply with that zoning," like adequate buffering. But to say that, you know, if this had been a McDonald's restaurant, we would approve it. But since it's a dollar store, we're not going to approve it. Both of those are permitted by the code. We've just decided we don't like dollar stores. Well, if they chose to take us to court, that wouldn't stand up very long. It'd be in Superior Court up in, in Holbrook, and we'd be wasting our lawyer's time to try and argue that. So, so our hands are not tied. You know, we don't have to approve everything that the, that the applicant asked for. We can, we can make reasonable requirements. It's certainly reasonable to apply buffering between him and a neighbor. It's certainly reasonable, in my opinion, to require, as we did, Pat DeRozier mentioned this. You may not know, Pat. They originally asked for basically a metal-sided building, and Jeremiah struck that down. He said, "No, we're not going to allow that. We want to have the appearance. We want to have a certain color palette and certain materials." So some of the things you asked for, we're actually considering those things, like adequate buffering, respecting the private property rights of that guy, but respecting the private property rights of everybody else in this room too. That's, that's a hard balance, because nobody's going to get everything they want. He's certainly not going to get everything he wants. But, but, you know, the neighborhood here would really like to have not him. Well, I mean, at some point, you've got to respect his property rights too. So I, I think, I think we're working our way to something that's reasonable and it would hold up in court. I do agree with the mayor said, we don't, we don't require anybody else that comes to our town to present a marketing study that they, we then review. So it would be arbitrary to require him to provide a marketing review. The second thing is, it's back to that, so what question, I say, so the guy, a marketing review is done and it has a result. So what? Suppose the marketing study says, "This is a great idea." So what? Suppose the marketing study says, "This is a bad idea. That guy's just wasting his money." So what? Do I care? He builds this store, they go under in six weeks, and we build another Mexican restaurant in there. That'd be great. So, so we've got to be careful what we require. But, you know, I, I think we're, we're edging towards something that's workable. I hope it's workable for him. I'm less concerned about him than I am about, you know, the rest of us. But I think it's work, workable for him, even though it cost him more money than he planned on spending.
Thank you, Councilor Snitzer. Any other further comments? Councilor Heiser?
I just wanted to make one more comment. I, I don't feel like anything that I'm asking for or saying is arbitrary and capricious. I mean, it's in our town code to be able to require a study, and it's what the appeal was partially based on. I guess what I'm saying is, I see more than a block wall in the letter that was written to us to consider for appeal. So, and in our town code, it does allow us to address some of the concerns of the citizens that wrote the letter. And, and I don't disagree with you in the fact that, right at the end of the day, so what? I don't know what the study would say. I don't know what it would come out as being, but at least it would answer the questions of the citizens that, that wrote the letter and had the concerns.
If, if we are, I'm about, sorry, but if we are willing to require that marketing study of everything else for the future that opens up in town, we'd be on a lot more secure ground to say, oh, we always, from now on out, we will always require whatever review. That would be reasonable. You know, any other, any other store going in there, we would have to answer the question about water. Any other store that goes in there, we'd have to answer. Traffic, drainage, all those other things, we would ask anybody. But if we say no for this dollar store, we want a marketing study.
But there's four right around the area, though. I think that's the biggest thing is, there's so many in such a close vicinity. That's where it says, "Let's see what's this going to impact, all this strip." Whereas if you look at Sholo, they have, they have about the same amount of dollar stores all across Sholo, the entire town, not the majority in a matter of a mile and a half. So I think on this ground, it would be like, we want to know what your impact's going to be to this region, to this, or whatever radius we end up setting it, what's your economic impact, case by case, case by case basis? I think a hundred percent it makes sense to ask that question to the Dollar Tree corporation. I think it would, it would depend on different factors. We, we don't know. Like that's saying, we don't know, that's not, that's not to us right now. So it's hard to make that decision of what it should be when that's not on the agenda. This is on the agenda right now. We know what's right in our community. We know if it doesn't match our general plan. Does it match the community vibe? Those, that is not on the agenda right now. See, I, I understand where you're coming from, but I think case by case basis, for what's going on with general plan, with all these different things that are, that are around in the appeal, we, we could ask you.
Councilor Smith, did you have something to say?
Yeah, just one quick thing about, one of the things that has come up here that all of a sudden, we're talking about mirroring the, the entire project. That could have devastating effect on the image, the, the view, the look of the store, whatever. Besides being very, very expensive, maybe to re, replan everything around mirroring. And I didn't hear too much from the neighbors about, we'd like them to mirror this so it turns the other way. I, I don't think they care. So I think that would be a really expensive thing for the developer. And might be impossible to, it might be impossible to actually mirror it, you know, to make it look different.
I think that the request was just, mostly, when most site plans are submitted, they don't have a complete set. These guys submitted a complete set. It wasn't an ask of ours. They have Apache submitted a site plan review, and they have, you know, 16 sheets. These guys submitted a full engineered set. So that's one of the differences. But I think the idea of the mirrored, the mirrored building was just, it came from the noise generation of the, of the trash truck, which was one of the issues that arose in P and Z. And if you guys don't want to, or you feel like that is an erroneous ask, it's no skin off my neck. I'm fine with that. It was just a thought that maybe, maybe it would, maybe it would help attenuate the sound. But there's, maybe if, if we go with the fence, maybe that's a better solution.
Okay, other questions, comments? You've already had your opportunity, but thank you. Mike, would you like to add anything? Or Jarrett?
No, thank you. Not at this time. We, we do appreciate y'all taking the time to really dig into this. But, you know, just, just real quick on the economic feasibility study. I, I understand what you're saying on, on that front, but, you know, we're, we're a build-to-suit developer and, and, you know, obviously, they feel like, if they're going to spend the money to come here and, and continue this process, that they feel like a Dollar Tree and, and this, this town is going to be, is going to thrive. So that being said, you know, I, I do think it would be a good thing for the, for the city.
Thank you. You know, there were comments made early on about traffic and drainage. Those, those are all addressed in here. There's a traffic study in here that talks about daily trips that they project would have. There's drainage studies, which is something that we have to rely on Jeremiah to review for us, at least speaking for myself. So, so those issues have been, have been discussed.
They have. They showed in the traffic analysis that it would have a minimal impact. And in the engineering study, I asked that they show that it drained down in 36 hours, and they showed that it drained down in 18 with the system that they had engineered.
Thank you. Councilor, Vice Mayor.
If I could just say, I, I think, I think we're looking at, again, the block wall, fire flow. And I, I do think we can look at economical studies. I mean, and I, and I don't mean to beat a dead horse here, but we are talking about four stores in a small area. There's a community not far from us that had two stores. One of them has been closed and vacant for five or six years. And we have enough vacant buildings in this town. We don't need another one. And that's why, again, and, and I understand, Mike, what you're saying. You didn't really answer the question, though. Was, maybe you don't know. I don't know. Was a feasibility study done by you or by Dollar Tree? And, and again, I don't, I don't know, but I mean, I don't think that's, again, based on what we've seen in this area, is that too much to ask, I guess? And it appears that the statutes and our codes allow that. I do agree with Jim. If we're going to do it now, we need to make it a, something that we do for everything.
I was sitting here thinking, suppose you do an economic study and it says, this town, you know, we've already got three dollar stores and there's only room for three. Are you saying that I, you know, the result might be the new business comes in and fails? Or it might be that the new business comes in and does a better job and one of the old businesses failed? So now, do you think it's our job to protect the existing businesses from competition? That's, that's the chain you get yourself into. I'm going to protect the existing businesses from competition, even though it might offer the people of this town better service, or lower prices, or better goods. No, I, you know, I'll protect the businesses that are here. It gets us into a slippery slope of what we do is, is, you know. We provide a, a level playing field. Nobody can argue with that. If we start protecting the existing businesses at the expense of new businesses, that's, well, that's a very precarious position to put yourself in. It means, gee, I won't take new ideas, better stores. I want to keep my old inefficient stores here and protect the guys that are already here. That's self. If, if you were faced with that as a consumer and the better stores were in some other town, you wouldn't stay here and buy from the existing three-dollar stores because, gee, I'm just loyal to the old stores. No, you say, I'll, I'll go where, wherever it makes the most sense for me to shop. So I'm not, you know, I just don't even want to get into marketing studies and deciding what people, you know, he's putting the money at risk and I'm willing to hope that he succeeds.
I think that was well said. Councilor Snitzer, I agree with you. We want everybody to succeed and new, new stores, new ideas. And furthermore, we continually get requests for new grocery store or new this or that in our community. If we continually turn down opportunities, those places are never going to come to our community. And we're going to be with what we have. Councilor Heiser?
I just wanted to say that in this particular circumstance, once again, you know, it, it is within the purview of town code for us to require a study. And I, I can't, I remember one time speeding down the road, an officer pulled me over, and my argument to that officer was, well, there was four other cars on the road and they were all speeding too. And that didn't get me out of the speeding ticket, and I couldn't make any argument to the judge that just because he wrote me a ticket, not the other four people, that somehow that should mean that I shouldn't have to do it. In this particular circumstance, I believe it's, it's my obligation as a council member to, to answer to the constituency. The constituency is here. They're, they're saying that they want to know some of these issues and how they're going to be impacted. I'm not saying that at the end of the day, if that study comes back and says, well, we're going to shut down three other dollar stores by opening this one, that it changes the decision of the council, because in that, in that front, we have to be neutral. But it doesn't necessarily mean that, that the, the public shouldn't be able to have their questions answered. And I don't think it's an unequal application of that rule. I think that if somebody else was to come in here and, and make this similar type of argument, that, that maybe in that case, we would do the same thing. And frankly, I, I don't have a bias. I don't, if it was another Mexican food place or a McDonald's and they came in and asked the same questions, would we be having the same conversation? I believe we would, but that's.
Thank you. Any other questions, comments? Yes.
Could you just add, you know, I know we talked about earlier the, the idea of a feasibility, economic feasibility study. There isn't anything actionable that the council can use that information for. If it came in, like Councilor Snitzer had said earlier, if it came in that, wow, it's not going to succeed, you still have to allow this store to go forward. There isn't anything there that is actionable. Over the course of my life and several different business careers, I'd see a new grocery store go into a fairly new area. And then suddenly, a second one went across the street. And I always thought, wow. You know, what kind of marketing plan was that? Suddenly, there's a, a second one across the street. We've got a plethora of auto parts stores, but we, we let, we let them go because they meet the, the criteria. So it's a sticky wicket to get into requesting for everything a economic feasibility study. Of course, you always hope that a company does that, and hopefully, none of those, the existing stores will go out. I think it, it could be a sticky wicket, because there's nothing actionable to come from it. Now, the fire flow, that that's a good one. It's going to be required in the building permit anyways. So you might as well know that one upfront. I think that is something that will be a decision maker for this company. So I'm just putting in my two cents. Home Depot, I can remember being in a community, we begged Home Depot to come in. They kept telling us, no. Home Depot came in and Lowe's went across the street. You went, wow, how, whose marketing plan was that? So maybe that is their marketing plan. So I, again, I just say that there's nothing actionable that can be used in that feasibility study.
To your point on the building permit not being issued till the fire department regulations are met. So that, that is the case as well. Whether we approve the site plan or not, they can't have a building permit until those fire flows and all those requirements are met.
True.
Correct? Councilor Snitzer?
I, I think it's, it's, I mean, it's been said, I think it is a very reasonable day to ask a question, and we have asked it. What would we like to attract in our town? What really fits here? And we've discussed that, but the thunder we always ran into was we end up dealing with what comes up, what appears on our doorstep.
Turn your mic on, Jim.
Oh, sorry.
Where do I, do I have to go back? Yeah, the, 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 what I said was, it's a very valid point to say, it, it would be a good study to say, how do we want our town to change? How do we fill these empty stores? What kind of businesses? We absolutely want some businesses to come into town if for no other reason than to fill those empty stores. We, we ought to want that. I know there are people that say, I don't want any more traffic in town. I don't want this. I don't want that. But, but, you know, we've got all these empty stores. It would be nice to fill them. I think most people in this town would say, yeah.
I think most people in this town would say, yeah, I'd like to see at least that, maybe new businesses. So, what kind of new businesses would we like to have? And then, how do we get those? And then, we run into that, that thing like, well, gee, we've already got a lot of Mexican restaurants. Maybe there's room for another one. We've already got a lot of dollar stores. Maybe there's room for another one. But if you wanted to have a shoe store, or a clothing store, you know, there's a reason nobody's shown up on our doorstep saying, gee, I'd like to open a hat store in Pine Top Lakeside, because they don't think it would succeed. So, it's, I mean, I don't, I wish I had the answer to that question. What kind of businesses do we want to have come into this town, and how do we get them here?
That's, that's been the age-old question, I think.
Yeah.
It really has. It really has. Okay, council? Any other questions, comments? Jeremiah, do you have anything to add? Mike, do you or Jarrett have anything to add?
No, no, thank you.
Okay. What are the wishes of the council?
I'd be glad to make the motion.
Counselor Snitzer?
I move to affirm the Planning and Zoning Commission's site plan approval of SPR-23-262 for the construction of a Dollar Tree, construction of a Dollar Tree, and amend the conditions attached to the approval to include the following: a six-foot CMU, that's concrete masonry unit, block wall, and screening trees every 15 feet. Mirror the site so the Summer Haven subdivision is toward the back of the structure, and town hall is toward the front, and signs shall be no greater than 150 square feet. And I would add, and successful completion of the fire, of the requirements of the fire department.
Can I get to that motion? Okay. That will die for lack of a second. Do we have another motion?
I'll try.
Counselor Smith?
I move to affirm the Planning and Zoning Commission's site plan approval of SPR-23-262 for the construction of a Dollar Tree, and amend the condition attached to the approval to include the following: a six-foot CMU block wall. And that sign shall be no greater than 150 square feet.
Second?
I'll second that.
Second that? Okay. Now, that is up for discussion. We have a motion and a second. Is there further discussion on this? Councilmembers? Okay, could you repeat your motion again, Jerry? That we have, you did not mention the trees. That's correct. That was the motion I heard. Is that what you heard, Mackenzie? Thank you.
Yes.
Okay.
Oh, I'm sorry. Let me, let me remake the motion.
Would you like to amend your motion?
Yes.
Okay.
I move to affirm the Planning and Zoning Commission's site plan approval of SPR-23-262 for the construction of a Dollar Tree, and amend the conditions attached to the approval to include the following: a six-foot CMU block wall and screening trees every 15 feet, and signs shall be no greater than 150 square feet.
My second.
Counselor Snitzer, is that okay? Remand that motion?
Sorry.
That's okay. I just wanted to clarify, because that's how we got to where we are. We have a motion and a second on the floor. Is there any further discussion? Seeing, did you have something?
No, we're good.
Okay. All those in favor, please signify by raising your right hand. All opposed? The motion fails four to three. So, does that mean we, that the P&amp;Z is...
Can we make another motion?
Yeah. Yeah, you can make another motion.
Okay.
I would make, I would make a motion.
Turn your mic on. Thank you.
So, I move to affirm the Planning and Zoning Commission's site plan approval of SPR-23-262 for the construction of a Dollar Tree, and amend the conditions attached to the approval to include the following: a six-foot decorative CMU block wall and screening trees every 15 feet. Mirror the site. Include a flow, a flow...
Fire flow study.
Fire flow.
Fire flow study, and a economic impact to the community of Pine Top Lakeside. Let's see. Towards the back of, let's see. Summer Haven subdivision is towards the back of the structure, and town hall is towards the front, and signs shall be no greater than 150 feet. Did I say that right?
If that's what you wanted to say.
Well, I believe so, but I approve it.
Second.
Second, okay. We have a motion and a second. Is there further discussion on this?
The only thing that I just would like to say is, I think that the one thing that the residents are asking for, and if there's something that corrects us on this, is an eight-foot block wall. Is there any reason why we couldn't approve that condition?
So, would we require a variance for the eight-foot wall?
Okay.
What's a variant? Let me expand that.
So, the code only allows for a six-foot wall. It allows for greater than that, and quasi-governmental. I think it was mentioned that Pine Top Lakeside Sanitary is great, had one of those are quasi-governmental. So, stuff like that, if it, or Public Works Yard, if we wanted to do eight foot, we could. But other than that, it would require a variance.
Okay.
Okay. And your, your motion, go ahead, I'm sorry.
I mean, isn't it quasi-government when it's this close to a town hall?
I would say, no. It's a free enterprise, commercial. We are, if we wanted to put an eight-foot wall up, we could, but that's not what we're hearing tonight.
Okay, so your motion included mirroring the site, mirroring the site plan?
I think, I think it would be beneficial to mirror the site plan. We didn't ask the company to bring in a 30-page, or have a large document. They overwent above, so if it's their cost, and now flip it, and, and see what, come from there, then I would say, yes. Flip it, and let's see what that looks like for the citizens.
Okay. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please signify by raising your right hand. Or all opposed? The motion carries five to two. Okay. Thank you. That concludes our business this evening. I assume you'll convey to Mike the results of this. I know he's on the phone, but it's sometimes hard to hear. So, thank you, everybody.